All right, this is the Planning Board meeting of December 22nd, 27th of 2016. And this meeting is brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media. If we could please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's, we can start with the articles for April Town meeting. And one of them is the Bedroom Density Limit Revision. And I know we discussed this at our last meeting. And we were, we talked about maybe the Board Health or somebody might, or somebody that brought this to our attention may be here tonight to speak about this.
So after your last meeting, you have a copy of an email I sent on Wednesday, December 14th, letting Mr. Chevlo, who is the person who brought this idea forward, you know, I let him know that you've discussed it and that you, that the Board has invited him or anyone else to come and speak at this meeting. You can see his response up above. He's out of the state. And I can tell you that as of this evening, I have not received any other correspondence from him. So, so I don't have any information in writing. I don't know if there's anyone here tonight who wants to talk about it. But as, at this point, this is, this is all I have for the Board for reaching out back to the people who brought the idea forward. You did ask me to, you know, we talked briefly about the Board of Health. Unfortunately, they still do not have a quorum able to meet, so they, they don't have any meetings scheduled. The, the health agent, Mr. Forg and I talked about it briefly. And if this is something that the Board is serious about bringing forward to April Town meeting and wants me to devote staff time and resources to, well certainly, you know, come before you during the public hearing stage and, you know, give you the kind of all of the research that we've done. But at this point, until, until we know, is this something that, that you want to bring forward to Town Meeting or not? And then, and until, and until the Board of Health itself can actually meet, we're kind of at a standstill on that front. Because there certainly are a number of things that the Board of Health can do under their septic system regulations to control nitrogen in, in this effluent. Which is different than what you would be considering as zoning control, but it would give you, you know, it would give you the discussion of alternatives. So, so at this point, I would just suggest if there's anyone here who Rich has, who shared my email with, who wants to talk otherwise, it's kind of up to you guys on what you want to do.
I know we had discussed that it would limit the number of bedrooms per dwelling, especially in a half acre lot. And then I was also thinking, I mean, there are probably a lot of people like in my situation who have three bedrooms but are only using one, you know, because, you know, some people use a bedroom as an office or for some other purpose. So, it may be that in a lot of homes that have half acre lots, those really three bedrooms aren't really being used. Then I was also thinking about what would happen to a conservation subdivision too?
So the-
That would kind of stop?
Well, the conservation subdivision is, if you remember, everything is built on the underlying lot size. So, just like you have a yield plan giving you the number of lots based on the area, the total area, even though the lots are smaller, you've got the open space, it would be a similar calculation for bedroom size. So the total number of bedrooms would be based on the total area, acknowledging the fact that the, that the reserved open space is still there. It's still part of the, of the subdivision. It's just, so just like those lot sizes are allowed to be smaller, then you would have a yield plan with the number of bedrooms, a yield of the total, excuse me, you'd have a yield plan for the number of lots, you'd have a yield for the total number of bedrooms. And then you would, the, the proponent would have to show you how those bedrooms would be laid out per each lot.
As far as I'm concerned, I, I just, I don't think that I'm really concerned about this right now. I think it would just put a lot of limitation to existing lot, half acre lots, and it would, and I don't really know if there's a need for this, so. I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
Well, I can, I'm gonna stand, stand for what I said earlier in our last meeting. I think, I think there is alternatives governed by the Board of Health and by engineering for nitrogen separation and stuff like that. Yeah, does it cost to develop them more? Yeah. But I have a hard time restricting people's assets, trying to govern that. And that's the biggest thing that keeps coming into my mind is that we're restricting people's assets. So, if you have an existing house and I want to put another bedroom on in a septic, but by the square footage I can, then you're taking my assets, my most valuable assets away, and trying to zone it instead of requiring me as a property owner go through my engineering and through Board of Health and do a nitrogen loading, separation, whatever, to better the quality of disposal. I think there's other, other ways of doing it other than zoning. So, until I get more information from either the Board of Health or from the proponent, Mr. Chevlo, and why we need this, I'm not willing to move on that type of action myself. But that's how I felt last time, and I don't think it needs to be here. I think it needs to be at the Board of Health.
I, I agree too. I don't feel comfortable putting this type of thing in right now, except restricting people. Especially when, my understanding was the reason it was brought forward was because of that small little plan that never developed. So I think we're kind of jumping the gun on that, that I don't want to do something that's going to affect 99% of the people for 1%. So I'm-
Yeah, 'cause, not to butt in, I think that's a good point that you make and that I don't think the public knows. This would be a townwide thing.
Mm-hmm.
Where we're all on private wells and everything, and, or a good portion of us. This would be a townwide thing. It's not a restrictive to like around our well sites and zones and that you explained to us last, at our last meeting. So that's important, that we all comprehend what, what the action that, that they want us to take. And it was because of the 43B, it was because of the proposal that was there. There's a legitimate concern that I think the residents had about the nitrogen, nitrogen loading and the adjacent parcels of property because of all the private wells. And they were going to be on the North Calva Water District's water. So, I understand where they were, but I don't think it should be zoning. I think, in my opinion, that engineering wise, they could have been forced to put those type of systems in place. Would it cost to develop them more money? Yep. And that's a cost of doing business, in my opinion. So, I just don't think it should be here. I don't think we should be zoning it and restricting the rest of the people in the town because of that 1% town. Not even 1%. Good point, though.
Well, I know if you're to sell your house now, you have to have a septic inspection. And if they find that there's problems with your septic system, then it has to be replaced. And if they find that there's problems with the water separation, if the septic system is too close to the water table, then you can do the nitrogen removal systems, and they allow you to do that. But when I worked, they wouldn't allow for, well, since that was if you didn't pass the PERC test, I guess, they wouldn't allow a new lot being developed to have a nitrogen system, removal system. But, but I guess if it passed PERC test and it passed all the tests for a regular system, the Board of Health could upgrade the, the requirements for the septic system so they could put in, you know, request that, that the builder do that. So I, I think that's probably the way to go. And that's, so I agree with everyone here. So why don't we, you know, unless somebody has more information for us, we'll just not include this-
Yep.
-to go to Town Meeting?
Yeah, so we're getting close to, I mean, we're, we're at the point where you need to make a decision. And, and a decision not to advertise it for public hearing, not to bring it to the warrant is totally, you know, is totally fine. So, we have the list of the articles that you voted at the last Town Meeting, so we'll move forward with those, at the last Planning Board meeting. And we'll move forward with those, and just this one didn't make the cut.
Yeah, that's fine. If there's other information that comes in, there's more time to do it some other year.
Yeah.
So.
So we can go on to, I guess we could go to Planning Board Member Notes. Is anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if I could, the Master Plan Committee met last Wednesday. We're really close on finalizing the document to bring forward to this Board and then to Town Meeting. We've scheduled a, one more meeting for, I should have wrote it down, it's for next month.
The 11th, I believe.
The 11th, I believe it was, thank you.
January 11th.
January 11th. Just to work out some other, just little concerns that the Board members had, just to be more precise on what we were talking about and stuff. Majority of it's done, I think the biggest concerns that were, that was voiced at our meeting was the Council of Agents building, and the need for that, and need for that to be more located in the center of town. And the assets and stuff like that. To make sure that that was pretty clear, as in the direction of the master plan, bringing it forward and giving good clarification towards the need. The other thing that we had talked quite intensively about, and I know that it wasn't part of the initial plan, but we had asked for it to be added, was the agricultural piece. We talked, again, more about different pieces that should be added to the master plan that we think should be in there. These are from committee members that are in touch with the cranberry industry and the cranberry growers and, and really have good roots on where that should be. We also talked about, and I think it's, I think that's, you're gonna see it come to us as a suggestion, on the alignment of how they're placed in the actual master plan document. We start off with a, and I happen to have mine with me, land use starts out first. And then, and I know this is only the draft, and then we go into economic development and stuff like that. As it works through the document, I had suggested, and we had talked intensively about it, this is an, is a agricultural community, that we should go from land use right into agricultural use. And my concern, for me personally, not the Board, was that by the time you go through the master plan, and I know it's great reading, you'll learn a lot by going through it, but by the time you go through everything, at the end of the plan, they had, it may be just because of the way that we've been working on it, the agricultural piece. And then it was also, I just thought it was, shouldn't be at the end, it should be right up front, right after land use. And we had talked about that and how that could all go and stuff. And that's something that we're gonna work on in our next meeting. Plus, in the back of it is, has an implementation pages chart. And I wanted the committee to look at the priorities. They, the Serpents helped on identifying and also prioritizing whether it's a high, high priority, low priority, medium priority. And just for the committee members to look at that and discuss it throughout this timeframe while we're waiting for our next meeting, whether or not we thought a medium priority should be medium, or we think it should be changed to a higher priority or a low priority. Just to better define where the committee and the members of the committee that have reached out to the community, where that impact is. Serpents done a great job on assisting us in designing this and everything. Then again, it is the community as a whole, and I think that'd be great information to give back to Grant and Serpents to better define the plan, bring it forward to us. So we had a great meeting, again, it was very well attended, especially, you know, the Wednesday before Christmas, we had nine, 10 people that were in the room, that were all committee members, very engaging back and forth, so I think that it was a well-done meeting. So just to give you an update on that, we're, we're moving forward, our next meeting, and hopefully we're gonna have a, that will be finalizing the document to get to Serpents to bring to this, this Board. And then to Town Meeting for the spring. It's a, it's a great document, so.
I want to thank you and the Master Plan Committee for, for all the hard work that you've done, and, and Marlene to be there too, to thank you, to, for all this work, and it's finally coming to a conclusion, so.
Yeah. Marlene's been a great asset. She brought a lot to the Board, so, a lot to this, so it helps.
Well, thank you both. All right. And so we'll go to the minutes of December 13th. While everybody's here, I guess we can do that.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for December 13th, 2016.
Second up. Motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll go, now that Kevin's here, we'll go to our discussion tonight of the Planning Board's role in the North Calva Urban Renewal Plan local approval process.
Mr. Chairman, like I did before, I'd like to excuse myself as a Planning Board member where I am the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. And it's my plan. Well, me and four other members, so I'd like to excuse myself.
Okay.
I will be speaking on my own. Thank you.
Did you want to speak first?
I will.
Okay.
At your pleasure, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Will.
Again, my name is William Sinclair. I am the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. And this evening, I'm happy to bring to this Board the North Calva Urban Renewal Plan as you have in your docu, I think you have the documents from last time. The Board has met last week, the Board has voted to bring this forward to this Board and to the selectmen, then eventually to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, and hopefully for approval. The Board has worked on this for considerable amount of time, for the past six, seven months anyways. But most and particularly, I've got a, I want to take a little bit of time and talk about what the community has done in a whole. This community, for years, have worked on different aspects for the North Calva area to try to substantiate good, reliable commercial development that will have a great impact to this community for years to come. The town has invested a substantial amount of money in a North Calva Water District, developing a water resource to help provide for this type of development. That alone was a big feat. The community had taken a long time at looking at that property, finding a viable resource, going through the approvals to get it approved, and development and implementation of a North Calva Water District. In that, we had feasibility studies that was done, and an economic study that was done, that showed that if we were able to provide a water resource and develop it and have it up and running, this would be a great asset to try to develop that North Calva District. Town has implemented many different strategies, feasibility studies, to try to implement and groom north of Route 44 in that corridor for development. All of this is, which is in the Urban Renewal Plan I went through last time, different type of issues that have taken place. The master plan, one of, one of your criterias is to see if this fits within the master plan. The 2001 master plan states that it governs to drive economic development in the North Calva area. I can tell you that the, as we were just talking about, the updated master plan, as it's gonna be coming to Town Meeting, we've carried that forward, the implementations for development in that type of area, and the preservation for other areas in town isn't master planned, so we're staying the course of what, what has been implemented by the town and by the residents of the town, where they're looking to implement development and maximize development. The economic, comprehensive, comprehensive economic study that has been done, that's in the Urban Renewal Plan, there's a lot of reading, I hope you guys did quite a bit of reading on it, was very thorough. We reached to a point at our last meeting that the Mr. Tushers and the Tusher residents has been taken right out of the to be acquired, it's not to be acquired at all. We didn't even take a piece of it. We didn't think that we needed to. This plan is a, is a document that's gonna help us develop. It's, it's a good guide for us, and it's going to show us the proper way to do it, to maximize type of development and have, in here, there's, you'll see under the Planning Board end is to work in conjunction with the Redevelopment Authority on different criterias of landscaping, stuff like that, of what we thought would be better for buffering and stuff. There's a lot of information here for us to bring forward to you guys. I hope you did some of your background on this. This is a great document to bring forward. I'm encouraging you guys to endorse this and bring it forward. If you have any questions, either myself, Marlene, or our consultant can answer them. And that's all I want to say. I don't want to get too far into it, because I can ramble on for hours about different things that this community's done to try to drive that district into getting some great economic development. Marlene, you got anything?
So the last time the Planning Board discussed this was the 13th. The Redevelopment Authority did meet the following week, on the 19th, as Will said. They did revise some of the items of the plan, and those, those have been taken into account and will appear in, in the final version. They, the Redevelopment Authority also voted on the 19th to move the plan along. So they have, they have taken their vote, and it's now ready for you to take your vote if you so choose. And I didn't print out the whole plan for you again, but in your packets today, I did give you a copy of Section 6 approvals, and the Planning Board is the second paragraph. And as we had talked about before, the Chapter 121B, the Urban Renewal Act, is very clear on the Planning Board's role is to make two findings. So DHCD is looking for you to make two findings if you agree. And they are that the preparation of the plan was based on a local survey, which, as we've discussed, is using essentially the most current information and verifying and fact-checking it to the best of our ability, that it's, you know, it is current and accurate. It's conceptual, it's a very long-term, it's a planning document, it's not a proposal for a project. So it's a, it, you know, there's, there's still a lot of uncertainty, but the foundation is sound as to the, the data, the information that is, is in the plan. And then, as Will mentioned, the second finding that the Board needs to make is conformance with the, with the master plan or the comprehensive plan. And we just, we discussed last time, the 2001 plan is the latest adopted plan by the community. The current update won't be adopted until the Spring Town Meeting in April, but the same policies and goals are being brought forward. So, those are the two questions that the state wants to hear from you about, so I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, I read through this, and I thought it was quite comprehensive, and it gave an excellent history of North Calva, what had been going on out there, the different businesses that have come and gone, the, what they've done with the property as far as, in a lot of areas, they've degraded the property by removing soils and, and having businesses that have come and gone and not taken care of removal of buildings or, or material that they were storing on the land. So it was very interesting to read all that. And I know through the years, as far as compliant with the master plan and being involved with the new master plan, as Will had said, that, you know, all these, we, we've taken this and the Master Plan Committee has taken all these things into consideration, but in development of, from the 2001 master plan, the wells in, in North Calva, and all those were done specifically to develop this area, so that was all part of that, that master plan. So I, I thought this was a great document, and I, and it also gave great guidance on what type of development's gonna be out there and where we're gonna put it and how it's gonna affect the area. And some of it that I was, was interested to read was some of the cranberry bogs that are gonna be out there, they're gonna develop around there, and still keep some of the existing features of the land that would, you know, that, that are common to Calva. So it's interesting to build, to develop this area, but still keep some of the, the natural features of the land that are nice out there. But I thought, reading through this document, that it was compliant with the old master plan, and, and it did list all the deeds and all the properties out there, so to me, this, I would recommend this to- this, I would recommend this for the selectmen to review. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say.
Actually, instead of saying something, I had a couple of questions.
Question, yeah, sure.
I guess one of my questions would be, I would like to know the, a little bit of the history of the people whose homes are going to be taken by eminent domain, and if, if, if I'm wrong, and they're not going to be taken by eminent domain, and they're going to receive fair market value, I'd still like to hear what they, you know, feel. I don't feel comfortable being part of something that would, you know, tell somebody that they're going to lose their home and they're not going to get paid for it, what if, you know, what if it's something that's sentimental, and it's part of a family history. So, I would like to know that little piece, and I guess the other part I'd like to know is, being a resident of Carver for a significant amount of time, knowing the way the cranberry bogs work, are the, is the cranberry girl going to receive, you know, some kind of pay as far as, let's face it, some of these cranberry bogs have been here for 100 years, so they wouldn't be giving up something that isn't part of a regular income for them, they'd be giving something up that's either been in the family or part of something that's, you know, bigger and greater than I am at the moment. So, I would just like a little more history on some of that going forward, but I agree that it looks excellent, I read it over, I can see that it would definitely help this town, and it would be a great thing to incorporate it, but I just, I want to know a little bit more as far as the history is concerned with the, in those, for those two questions.
So, there, one chap, the Chapter 121B does give the redevelopment authority eminent domain powers. However, the plan, the plan that's approved by DHCD for an urban renewal plan, and all of the guidance and regulations that go along with that, make it clear that eminent domain or a taking is, is the last resort. So, you have to exhaust, the redevelopment authority will have to exhaust negotiations, attempted negotiation first. And the, there are two residential homes that are under agreement already, and, and those are, those are identified in the plan, and they have already reached a private agreement, I haven't seen it, I don't know what the details are, to sell. If, so those are, those are the two homes that are, that are in the area that are scheduled to be acquired, so those will not be taken by eminent domain, there's already private agreements for purchase. The other properties, including the bog properties, will go through, at some point, a, a negotiation process, and if, if all attempts at negotiation fail, if it's, if, if they, if the redevelopment authority and the, and the landowner just cannot agree on, on a fair price, then the, the law is that the, that there be at least two independent appraisals done, and, excuse me, and that the price be determined based on appraisal information. So, that's, that's the law that the redevelopment authority has to follow. But that, again, is all, this whole process will be governed by, it's called a land disposition agreement, for each parcel with DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, there's strict oversight on the information that, that these negotiations are based upon. In addition to that, so those would be for the vacant properties, because the, the properties to be acquired with the houses are already, they've reached agreement. So, those would be for the vacant properties. The septic plant that was torn down is one of them, that has to be acquired through a negotiated process. There's a contractor's yard without any structures, a commercial property. The bog properties are looked at as business land, they have a, they have a value for, they, they produce income, they're income-producing asset for those owners. So, those are looked at, those will be looked at in a similar manner as to what is the value that's produced, and, and what is the value of that asset, and that will have to be, that, that will have to be paid. So, so the eminent domain process is not, is not taking, taking without, it's, it's, it's essentially if a negotiated sale cannot be reached, it's a, it's a tool of last resort, but it's with compensation. And, and there's, and also, there's a parallel law that has to be followed for relocation costs, it's the cost of moving your business, moving your household furniture, move, your moving costs, and, you know, it's very detailed for storage costs, if you need to, you know, if you need to put items in storage, or if you need to rent short-term apartments while you're, you know, if there's a time delay or something. So, depending on the individual circumstances at the time of any sale, interviews will be done, and, and those needs will be determined, and then the relocation laws apply to where those costs are, the responsibility of, the, of the CRA and the redeveloper. You asked, you asked, the bog, so the bogs will be treated like a business property, they will also, they won't necessarily be relocation costs, but they'll be, the, the value of the property will be purchased. There was one more thing I wanted to say that has slipped my mind, it might come back to me, but does that answer your question?
I think that's a great explanation, I think the public needs to know that as well, so, I mean, I, I just couldn't, I probably couldn't conscientiously live with myself if I was part of something where somebody was, had no say, and it was just taken for them for the good of all, it still doesn't matter, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable if it even affected one person. So, I appreciate that, I think that was a great explanation, and I feel a lot more better being told how that does work, and I like the idea, and would like to believe that we wouldn't have to come to that last resort.
That's certainly the intention and the objective, is that unless it's, unless it's an absolute unwilling seller, then everything will be negotiated.
And so, I understand you're telling me there are only two people that are in that position, but both of them at present are under negotiations?
There are two properties with residential homes on them that are currently owner-occupied. There are two other, and, and those two properties are under agreement. There are two other residential properties, one is vacant, so the, the landowner will be compensated for the, for the value of the house, but, but there's nothing, there's no family to relocate.
Is it all right for me to ask, is it the one that's situated in the center of the bogs? Is that one of the two?
Yes, yes. That, the, that one is not under agreement yet, but that will be part of the package with the, with the, that bog purchase. The other house is also not under agreement yet, it's tenant-occupied, so, and that also is associated with bog property. And so, in that case, it's a little bit more complicated, because there will be a, a business payment for the bog land.
Right.
There'll be a payment to the owner of the proper, of the house, for the, for the value of the house, but because it's not owner-occupied, there'll, there'll be a third payment to the resident tenant of the house for, for that move.
Would it be all right if I approached you, so you could show me on this map where, I, I know where the one in the center of the cranberry bog is?
Yep.
But I just wanted to be aware.
I'm sorry I, I'm sorry I don't have my laptop.
Oh, that's okay.
It's still not working.
I thought it was Monday, so, blame on me. I apologize to anybody out there for not being here on time.
So, um...
I know that this is...
Yep, this is, this is, yeah, so this is the vacant property, the vacant residential property.
And this is the home.
This is the, with the, this is the tenant-occupied residential property. This is the owner-occupied residential property under agreement, and this one.
Okay.
Okay, so those, there are four.
Those are the four.
Those are the four.
So, this one would be part of the bog, as well as this, and these two are actually at the moment discussing agreements.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
I just want to kind of recap a little bit, so, initially, just, and for the people out there, because I know a lot of people have had questions, and just want to, you know, I want to clarify a few things, I'm sure other people did too. Originally, when the whole eminent domain came up, that was the big, it got everybody upset, as well it should. So, two of the properties that are under agreement now, and then there's a third, the Tushers, if I mispronounced the Tushers, right? So, that property's not going to be touched at all, they're going to be...
It's been taken out of the "to be acquired," it's been not to be even acquired.
So, those are really the three that were, that were the issue?
Those are the three owner-occupied...
Okay.
Homes, yes.
Okay, so two are under agreement, which they're obviously fine with, and then the third, the, the committee decided to work around that. Okay. Now, the, the others that we're talking about, the land disposition, have they been approached? Has that been approached yet, or is that something that...
That's something that will happen once there's an approved plan, because the state controls that.
Okay.
So, DHCD, once DHCD approves your plan, then you can start working under it, we're doing those actions. So, until, until DHCD approves the plan, the redevelopment authority can't actually do any of this, they don't have, they haven't been given the power from the state yet.
Okay. Now, maybe I missed something, but the, the two under negotiation, how, why were they approached, and these people couldn't be?
So, everybody can, so, the redevelopment authority has designated, almost a year ago, a preferred redeveloper, a private entity. It's the same entity that, it's Route 44 Development, it's the same entity you issued a special permit to, and they own the, the, they own the former Whitworth property. They have, and the redevelopment authority has signed a contract with them, that they are the preferred redeveloper for this future development under the plan. The redeveloper, which is why I haven't seen the agreements, and neither have the redevelopment authority, the redeveloper has the ability outside of the plan to negotiate a private, it's a private sale completely, both parties are private. Once one of the parties become public, become the redevelopment authority, then the state has to get involved. But right now, everything that's happening is not happening, it's a private, it's a, two private parties selling, agreeing to sell their property to each other. So, once the plan is approved, the land disposition agreement, and those, those laws come into play, and the state will regulate the public agency's actions.
Okay. So, the two properties that are under agreement now, they, these other two that we're talking about, that might go through this land disposition, those could have been already approached, but, but again, it's private, so we...
Right.
It falls under urban renewal law.
Right, so there could, there could be other landowners who are working out agreements, but I wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily know that yet.
And as far as the planning board, what we have to vote on, not that the eminent domain or the land-taking isn't part of it, but that's really not what we're, what our vote is.
Right, so your, your vote, the redevelopment authority had to actually vote to make this their plan. They had to vote to approve this plan and, and move it forward through this process. The planning board is not asked to approve anything, the planning board's asked to make two findings, so just like in a special permit, you have to find that, you know, we have, we have our, our special permit criteria, and you can make these findings that this particular, you know, plan that you're looking at does X, Y, and Z. So, you're being asked to find, not approve, but find that, in your opinion, the urban renewal plan is, conforms with the comprehensive plan, and is based on a, on a local survey, as the state is using that term.
Okay, because that's why I just wanted to make sure that not only the board, but everybody else knew that, whether or not we agree or disagree with the land portion, that doesn't, that's not under our jurisdiction, if you will, for lack of a better term.
Right.
We're just voting on, does it conform the local survey and conform with the master plan?
Right, you're answering those two questions. If you, if you, if you answer those questions as yes, it moves on, if you answer those questions as no, then, then it doesn't move on. The redevelopment authority has to approve the plan, and the Board of Selectmen, after a public hearing process, will have to take a vote to actually approve it.
And that's the whole plan?
And that's the whole plan.
So, it's from the selectmen, you have to have the fun stuff.
Right.
And one other quick question, the local survey, that we're, when, what was, when was that survey taken?
So, we had, so Maureen Hayes, who is the consultant who's put this together, and I have been working on it, actually, for, for a year, more than a year now, and so, you know, we're very used to talking about a survey as a professional land surveyor, you know, does an instrument survey, and that's not the way the state uses the term. The state uses the term as, you know, as the, the information, the data collected is, is based on current, you know, it's current public records, or it's kind of industry standards, it's not, you know, we can't, we can't just say X, Y, or Z, we have to, we have to document in the plan, you know, this, this is the current tax rate as of this date, these are the current assessments as of this fiscal year, we have to document what data we're actually using. So, in addition to kind of the, the public records data that, that we're relying on, Maureen and I also did a number of site visits to verify this, you know, this building on this assessor's field card is there, it's, you know, so, kind of to field verify that what we're, the number of buildings, the, you know, the locations of things that we're saying are actually true on the ground. So, so that's been happening over, like, the past 14 months now.
Okay, and it's listed in this document?
Yeah, the methodology is kind of explained, and the, the sources of the data, we've been, we've been trying to be very clear about the sources of the data for the, you know, fiscal year 17 records, the, and, and as things changed, we went back and updated. So, we, you know, we had had fiscal year 16 assessor's data originally, and then when, when we got updated data, we revised the plan accordingly.
Now, if we vote on this tonight, it, it, it's like other things that we've done, we're, we're just, it's just two little areas of this thing, and like you said, it, it encompasses a lot, but we're just voting on whether it's compliant with the master plan, or whether the, this, the survey is compliant, and, so that's our area that, that we look at tonight. Now, if this goes on in, to the selectmen, is that a public hearing for the, but tonight, it's, it's not a public hearing?
No, these are...
Because we're just voting on these two little pieces here.
Right, right. The selectmen have to hold a public hearing, it's been advertised for next Thursday, yeah, Thursday, January 5th, and that, that is a, that's a public hearing process like you would do for a special permit or a definitive plan, where notice was sent out, and, and people, people have the right to, to speak, and, and the board has to, you know, take in all that information. Your role is not a public, is, is not a public hearing, you're not, you're not approving, you're, you have, you... You're, you have, you have to make those, you have to answer those two questions, and it's, it's in the opinion of the planning board. So, you know, like much of your other work that we do, you have kind of a defined limit of jurisdiction, and that's, that's the case again with this, is it's not, it's not a wide open approval that you're being asked for.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
I think I'm good with enough.
Yeah, before we vote, Will's still here, and I'd like to thank Will and the redevelopment board for all your hard work. And again, Marlene too, working with them. This has been a big undertaking, as well as the master plan committee.
Actually, I got a quick question. It's not part of our process, but I know I've been asked this, that one, let's say this all gets approved through the whole, all the proper channels, has anything been discussed about potential clients, customers, that any plans that within the next year, something will happen, or is this just build it and they will come type thing?
At our last, last meeting of the redevelopment authority, or it could have been the meeting before, we had one of the owners from Route 44 Development speaking. And the conceptual ideas is that he has somebody out there, and it's, people have asked who, what, what is it? Big box, little box, who is it? I asked him point blank, who is it? He couldn't tell us. I think that as a citizen of the town, that we should know. But he's under some legal document that he can't disclose at. This is, is sometimes hard to make decisions on what you're trying to plan on without knowing the end user. Being a, being a planning board member for many years, it's always helpful to know who you're dealing with. So that way you can better define the area and better define how it works in our community. We've tried to take this document and be very broad with it and try to better define it. And I have to thank the chairman and this board for, you thank us and stuff, but the community at large, we reached out to the community from the start to get their input. This document that we've voted to bring forward is a lot of hard work from the community at large, Plimpton residents, as well as a couple of the selectmen from Plimpton, and also the Carver residents up in that area, voicing their opinions similar to like what we would have in a public meeting, similar to what the selectmen will have to have in their public meeting. They took a document that we were working on and better defined it and helped us design this to help better, make better judgments on the unknown. We don't know. But as, when we did the, when we did the green business box up there, is one of the initiatives that the community has done, when we looked at that, and we brought that to town meeting, what did it mean? What was the criteria to bring it forward to town meeting? It was just another, another tool to better define the area to what type of businesses and the growth that we wanted to see up there. Not knowing what would come is tough. But you know, as a planning board members, that not knowing the outcome is a hard thing to work on, similar to many of the committees that you guys have sat on and trying to work on bylaws. It's hard to judge, and you look forward to working with the community to get that input. I got to thank you, Jim, for bringing up the eminent domain. It's been a hard item. It was day one hard item for us. I wanted it right out in the public that part of this law, the urban renewal, included that in the urban renewal stature of eminent domain, and that we wanted to address it upfront. The indication from all of the board members is not very absolute, absolute last resort to use it. And it would, it would be hard to get that vote to use it. Absolute hard. And I can tell you that it would be hard for me to use that. And I'm speaking for me, but I could tell you the consensus from the board members that that always has been a hurdle. So I'm glad you brought that up. I want people to understand that not only did we know about it, but we wanted to bring it up and bring it out in the forefront. Nobody wants any property taken. So I think it's important that people know that we've done a lot of outreach, and we've had a lot of help from the community, a lot of help. Sometimes it's contested and trying meetings, but there always was good that came out of it. If you got through the emotions and you looked at the input that they gave as the document that's in front of you, we listened.
I think, I think that's, that's a great way of putting it, because I know there was a lot of tension and things going on there, and you guys handled that well. That's why one of my concerns is that all this gets voted on and approved, and then nothing happens for a year or two. And then, I mean, you guys put a lot of hard work, headache, a lot of, the residents all put in a lot of anxious moments and things, and for everyone to go through this for what they've gone through for the last year, two years, to all of a sudden have this thing get approved, everyone's finally, you know, in agreement, and then nothing happens. That's why I was wondering if he knew that something might be, he has something on the back burner that, you know, give him a timeframe, you know? I guess maybe we can put that...
I guess when we, when I had talked with the developer, the developer in a public meeting, you know, realistically, take Shaw's when Shaw's came into town and they were going to build on that site. There was permitting that had to take place, and where they were getting water from and all that. That site didn't go up, you know, like this.
Right.
It took time. There's a lot of moving parts to the urban renewal plan and up in that area. The plan, just to get a water source and infrastructure, has taken years. To get the community to do that was a big hurdle. Now, this document here, among all the other ones that are listed in this, this document, the different actions that the community has taken to help better define that area and what the community wanted to see, is just another tool. This is, this is a good tool for us. As far as implementation, it's going to take a body that's going to want to build. There's going to take a company that's going to want to come to Carver and come to that Route 44 corridor and be there and make, make the investments. Would love to say that somebody was coming with surety, but I don't know that. And none of the board members know that, and I know Marlene doesn't know that, because we've asked. It would be nice to be able to say that, but this document's going to give us that extra tool that we can use to better shape it. And now with the state being involved, the Department of Housing and Community Development, who ultimately will either approve this document, send it back to us, say no, we don't know. It's just steps that we have to go through. But if they ever approve the document for us to implement, then it's just another tool for us to better define that area. And to be able to implement something like that will be huge. Timeframe, I couldn't tell you. But there would have to be investments made. Water, water would have to get to the site. Storage of the water would have to be part of that. Electricity is a big one, that I know the property owner from Route 44 has been working on with EverSource and also with, I know that he's reached out to Middleborough on that end. You've got to think of how the septic's going to be treated. All that stuff takes time. Those aren't something that can happen overnight, within a year, two years worth of planning. You know, new source approvals for water resources, stuff like that, takes time. So realistically, in two to five years, I'd be reaching, if just knowing how things happen in the industry. That's why this document's out for a while, but it's a good, good tool for us.
It's an excellent tool. I have to agree with, appreciate you guys. Give you a lot of credit, put a lot of time and effort and took a lot of heat.
Yeah, it's okay though. That's all good stuff.
It was good because it proved that it was something that's worthy, because the public came out and, you know, you guys took all their comments and suggestions and things under it, so.
You know, as we worked on the solar bylaw, and that was something that we worked on together, and we tried to get better defined that and how it fits into our community. That's why we did that. And there was a lot of, lot of heat in that and a lot of confrontation. We came up with a good bylaw. But it's like doing the master plan. There's a lot of information, a lot of public input that's necessary. Four people on a board, five people on a board can't define what the community wants. Takes a community to walk and roll and work. And what we want in our community, just another tool.
And without this document, that area would just be a blighted area, and it would just be that way for years and years to come? So it is good to have, and this kind of, I know with the master plan, we do areas of the town, but this really takes a microscopic view of this area to plan it so that, you know, later on, we, you know, something can be done with that, so. And without this, it may, would never come about. I did notice, reading through this urban renewal plan, it says for 20 years, they're going to have, the IDA is going to have to overlook this.
Yeah.
So...
It's not a short term by any means, but as we were just discussing, things are going to take time, you know, and you want to do it right. You want to use whatever tools that are available to this community and try to implement those to the best of our abilities. Because boards will change, people will change. And to have a document that's in place, that better defines it and doesn't have, have just one board governing, it's going to be overseen by, you know, a state agency, is huge. It's huge for the community to have that ability to have that. Because your checks and balances are huge for us as boards change, in the sway of how the community feels and everything. To go in and change a document later on, will take that whole process all over again. So the redevelopment authority, if they wanted to make a change in it, that it was a substantial change, would have to do it all over again. And then bring that back up through the same channels that we're going through now, through the planning board, through, you know, through the selectmen, and then through DHC to make those changes. But it'd be the community as well. It wouldn't be the boards. It'd be the community as well.
Then there'd be a lot more public hearings with the IDA, and then coming here to the planning board.
Well, we didn't have public hearings. We just had meetings working on this. The board had decided at the beginning to engage the public. The public was coming. They were asking questions. They needed to be involved. So let them be involved. Let them help. That's what we're here for. Not everybody wants to sit behind the desk and make the decisions and, you know, donate your time and being engaged and being involved. But the community in a whole has a lot of input, and it's valuable.
All right, thank you again, Will, for that information. So I guess if nobody has any other questions, we'll take a motion.
So will we make a motion to pass this on, to approve it?
So you would make a motion that you find that the North Carver U R P is based on a local survey and conforms to the comprehensive plan for the town. So it's that language in the planning board paragraph as a, as a motion for a finding?
So we have to do, and then one is compliant with the master plan?
Yeah.
We have to do those separately or we do those together?
You can do it as one motion if you want to, or you can split them up and you can make a motion to find A and a motion to find B.
I think we probably just do both, I would, I would say.
I'd like to make a motion to get all that out of the wording.
So it's, so if you're, if you're looking at this page right here?
Yep.
On the planning board?
Indicating that the North Carver U R P is based on a local survey and conforms to the comprehensive plan for the town as a whole.
And that, that's, yep, that's it.
That's it. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 So the three of us, Will abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Will. So that was one, or was that both? Did we do...
That had both.
Okay.
Jim's motion had both of the findings.
All right, so we've gone through the discussions for the planning board's role in North Carver Urban Renewal, and we talked early about the bedroom density. So then we did other business, planning board member notes, and we'll discuss that we're going to have a master plan meeting January 11th, January 11th, 2017. So we, and we voted on the minutes, so, and Marlene said she didn't have any correspondence.
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year, and Chad, our missing member, please, have a better 2017.
Yeah.
You're going better, Chad?
Yeah.
And a public happy new year.
And our next meeting date is January 10th, 2017. We have something scheduled?
Well, right now, all we have is, is the lot release for Limbia's Path. So you had voted in concept to release a number of lots, but the plan needed to be adjusted, which you did, needed to be recorded, the appeal period needed to run. And so the plan was recorded today, and the special permit was recorded today. So at your next meeting, you can actually vote to release those, so that release can then be recorded. And then if you have any A and R plans that come in, but it's, it's no new projects.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night. Happy new year, everyone.